Mayor Bernie, we can't hear you.
Is it on?
It should be on now.
I am, can you hear it now? Can you hear it? Oh, it's really quiet. Okay, there we go. I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council held on Tuesday, May 6, 2025, commencing at 7:00 PM. I will call roll starting with Council President Kritzer.
Here.
Um, Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Here.
Councilmember Slahudin.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Council Vice President Forsyth?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for excusing her. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander, or AANHPI Heritage Month, observed each May is a celebration highlighting the diverse history and cultures of Asians, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders throughout the United States. AANHPI contributions have and continue to impact American life in all aspects, from science and medicine, literature and art, sports and recreation, government and politics, to activism and law. And whereas the theme for May 2025, AANHPI, is a legacy of leadership and resilience, which honors the hard work of leaders who establish a foundation for future generations to thrive and adapt to change and adversity. We recognize the achievements of those who have paved the way, igniting the passions of those who will follow. We strive to continue breaking barriers, honor our traditions, and inspire the next generation of AANHPI leaders. And whereas this commemoration, first known as Asian Pacific American Heritage Week, was signed into law as a joint resolution by President Jimmy Carter in 1979, 12 years later, Congress expanded the observance from a week to a month. In 1992, President George H.W. Butch designated May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And in 2009, during the Barack Obama presidential administration, this tribute was renamed Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. On April 30, 2021, President Joe Biden signed Proclamation 10189, recognizing the month of May as Asian Americans, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas the month of May was selected to acknowledge the first Japanese immigrants to America on May 7, 1843, and the completion of the first transcontinental railroad in the States by Chinese laborers on May 10, 1869, also known as Golden Spike Day. Now, therefore, I, Angela Bernie, Mayor of the City of Redmond, Washington, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and encourage everyone to recognize this month by acknowledging the numerous and longstanding contributions of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders throughout the history of the United States. Our next item on the agenda is a proclamation for Older Americans Month. And we're gonna have some special certificates and honors tonight with this. Whereas May is Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and honor the city of Redmond's older adults. And whereas through their wealth of life experience and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge. And whereas older Americans improve Redmond through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas Redmond benefits when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds can explore and participate in a life of purpose, engagement, and connection. And whereas the new Redmond Senior and Community Center serves as a vibrant hub where seniors are valued and their wisdom is recognized. The center empowers older adults by providing a space where they can be an active and dynamic part of our community. And whereas Redmond will focus on transforming how society perceives, talks about, and approaches aging and encourages all individuals and communities to challenge aging stereotypes and misconceptions. Now, therefore, I, Angela Bernie, Mayor of the City of Redmond, Washington, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Older Americans Month, and call upon all community members to join me in recognizing the contributions of our older residents and promoting programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults. And normally, I have information outside of this because I have some certificates to give out, but I don't have any information on it. Thank you. Let's start with, let's start with this one first. And I'm gonna have a few people come up here, and then we'll take a picture with the proclamation. Older Americans Month 2025 honorees. Emerald Heights Senior Living. Emerald Heights management and staff are steadfast supporters and advocates for seniors to ensure they have access to the resources, services, and dedicated spaces they need to thrive and find community. Over the past several years, Redmond Senior Program have been the beneficiary of donations and community grants from Emerald Heights, including funds to provide furnishings for the senior lounge and library in the Redmond Senior and Community Center. In addition, Emerald Heights has been the sole sponsor of the Rockin' on the River Summer Concert Series for the past 10 years. This annual event has grown from a few hundred attendees on the back lawn of the old senior center to several thousand attendees on the great lawn between City Hall and the Redmond Senior Community Center. Emerald Heights ongoing sponsorship has made the growth of this anticipated event possible, and Rockin' on the River continues to be a vibrant, uplifting opportunity for people of all ages to come together and connect in our community. And we have Emerald Heights here to accept this award. And Grant, did you want to say a couple of words? Oh, no, okay. Let's get a picture. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And next, we have Linda McChrystal. Linda has, Linda, come on up. Come on up, Linda. Let me read about you. Linda has been a dedicated senior volunteer since 2016, generously giving her time and energy for over nine years. She is a current volunteer with the Senior Lunch Kitchen Crew and previously volunteered with the Curbside Lunch Program in front of City Hall. She has served on the Senior Advisory Committee, including the role of co-chair in 2022 and 2023. Linda also has an active role in the Redmond Senior Community Center Stakeholders Committee and was selected to be part of the RSCC grand opening as both a featured speaker and event supporter. In addition, Linda volunteers each week with Open Kitchen at Redmond Methodist Church, which serves free meals to the community members. Linda often jokes about her short stature, but she is a big presence in the senior community with her ever-present optimism, big smile, and unwavering commitment to serve. Linda is one of the first volunteers to welcome new people and is always encouraging fellow seniors to keep learning, get involved, and most of all, keep active and engaged in any age. And she is a beautiful writer as well, which I found out when we opened the center. So this is for you, Linda, for everything that you do.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna also give you, I'm gonna also give you the proclamation for this as well, so you can keep it. And thank you so much for everything you do for our community. You're just so appreciated. Thank you, everyone. It's just, those kinds of things are so much fun. We have so many great volunteers in our community, and it's so wonderful to be able to celebrate them and all of the work that organizations in our community and our people do. So thank you. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from Sound Transit with Ariel Taylor and Savannah Steele, and I'll welcome them up here.
Oh, right here.
Right here.
Right here.
Indeed.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Okay. Do we have to click anything? I don't think we touch this.
Hello, just making sure the mic is working. Hi, everybody. Hello, everybody in the audience as well. My name is Ariel Taylor, and I am the Director of Government and Community Relations here in East King County for Sound Transit, and I am joined by?
Savannah Steele, Manager of Government and Community Relations for Sound Transit.
Yes, and so today we have some very exciting news about service that's going to be opening to the Redmond community this Saturday. So we wanted to walk you through some of our plans and also answer any questions that the council may have. So, as I mentioned just now, on Saturday, May 10, please join us at the Downtown Redmond Station for the opening of two new light rail stations in downtown Redmond and Marymore Park. Today, we're gonna cover a little bit about what that means with our system expansion, some two-line facts for those who are interested. And of course, the meat of the presentation, we'll be talking about opening day and the celebrations. So just a little bit of background. This is the first, the Downtown Redmond Project is the first ST3-funded light rail expansion project to come online since voters approved the package in 2016. So this is a very big milestone, not just for the agency, but for Redmond and the region. In ST3, we also have connections going north and south up to Everett and down to Tacoma, as well as a future new line of service for Sound Transit, which is called Bus Rapid Transit, the STRIDE program. And of course, our communities north and south will see expanded sounder service. This is our voter-approved system. We've had three ballot measures over the last 20-plus years that helped fund our light rail expansion. This colorful map of spaghetti that you see here on the plate is what our system will look like when it is fully built out. What you can see there is that number two in Redmond. That is what we are here to talk about today. So a little bit about that number two, the two-line. So the two-line opened about a year ago. The initial eight stations between South Bellevue and the Redmond Technology Station, which Redmond Technology Station is also the Microsoft campus, for those who are interested in knowing that. On opening day, which was April 27 of last year, we had 35,000 people join us for the opening of those stations. If anyone was there that day, it was a huge celebration with a lot of community engagement, fun activities, food vendors, bike rides, like you name it. It happened last year, and we are hoping to replicate some of that excitement here in Redmond on Saturday. Ridership of the initial two-line has been holding steady within our ridership projections. For those who are interested, that is actually a live link, and we have a, an option to go onto our website to look at our ridership data, like in real time. We update it very regularly. And then, of course, we have some upcoming projects that will also be opening, including not only the two new stations to downtown Redmond on Saturday, but also the Cross Lake Connection, which will connect the two-line to the one-line currently operating in Seattle. That is scheduled to be the next project to open. Very exciting. So a little bit about Downtown Redmond Project. So this is a 3.4-mile light rail extension of the existing two-line that is in operations. The two new stations will be at Marymore Village, which is right next to Marymore Park, and of course, here in downtown Redmond. This is the terminus station for the two-line. So this is the last station in that line. And it connects to regional parks, trails, urban cores, and I wouldn't, I'm underselling the trail connection. There are so many ways to access these stations that are opening on Saturday by trails, not only the Redmond Central Connector, which is East Trail, but also the East Lake Sumamish Trail and the Bear Creek Trail. And there's so many trails. So please take your bike out and enjoy riding the train. We're also building a 1,400-stall parking facility to access these stations at the Marymore Village Station. This is the largest parking facility we have in our system, and that is really so that we can catch those community members who want an alternative to getting on 520 and being stuck in traffic. We're trying to catch them before they even have the chance to sit in traffic. And of course, these stations are opening on May 10. So here's a zoomed-in layout of the Marymore Village Station. Of course, all of these orange construction cones will be gone on Saturday, but this is the most current photo. This is the Marymore Village Station, and that orange and gray structure you see in the middle of that photograph is the parking garage that I just referenced, of course, with the light rail station right there towards the bottom of the image. On the right, you can see where all of the bus connections for this station will be interfaced with the light rail station itself. We will also have bike parking, we'll have Orca vending machines, all of the things you need to access the system. And of course, I also want to point out, there's a little trail connection just south of that animated photo you see. That connection goes directly into Marymore Park from the light rail station. We're really happy to be working with our friends at King County Parks to make sure that those who want to access our system with the park have the opportunity to do that. And then, of course, this is the Downtown Redmond Station. Like I said, all of that construction will be gone, and actually is already gone. And it will be less orange cone-looking on May 10. Here, you'll also see where the bus connections go with the Downtown Redmond Station, including also the other trail connection here, the Redmond Central Connector. And then, of course, our operating hours. So two-line trains operate every 10 minutes. So you never really have to worry about a train coming because it will be there in 10 minutes. Service runs right now from 5:30 AM to 9:30 PM, seven days a week. But when we do cross Lake Washington with that connection into downtown Seattle, we do expect those service hours to expand. So right now, it is 5:30 to 9:30, but it will expand until the wee hours of the morning once we cross Lake Washington. It's approximately 19 minutes from downtown Redmond to downtown Bellevue. I can tell you right now, I took the bus here today, and it definitely took me more than 19 minutes to make that same trip. So this is a very convenient option for those who are interested in using the service. The trains will be running two-car trains. If you see our trains out there right now, that's what they look like. They're two cars. When we cross Lake Washington, those will expand to four-car trains for extra capacity. And of course, we always have Sound Transit personnel and security staff on site to make sure our system is safe and all of our stations are ADA accessible. And this is where I will pass it to Savannah to talk about the exciting part.
Thank you. Yeah, so as Ariel mentioned, Saturday, we are opening these two new stations. We're having a big celebration. We invite the council, city staff, the community out to the event. I'm going to the next slide. So just, I think a lot of you in this room up there were at the two-line opening last April. That's the photo on the left at the Bellevue Downtown Station. And the photo on the right is the Lenwood Link Extension that opened last April. And so as Ariel mentioned, like 35,000 folks came out for that opening for the initial two-line segment, and we do anticipate similar enthusiasm and engagement from the community for, for this event on Saturday. So a little bit of the schedule. 10:30 AM at the Downtown Station. We are gonna kick it off with some remarks and programming, and then we will have a ribbon cutting. And then, starting at noon, right around noon, we're gonna kick off the service. And so the first train will start running. And following that first train, then trains will be in operation for the rest of the day until 9:30 PM. So once that first car goes, it's gonna be exciting to just see them come in every 10 minutes. And then, following kind of that initial 10:30 to noon, we are going to have a community celebration at both of the stations. And so some of those community celebrations in the past, you know, we have a lot of partnerships that occur when we open these lines. Some examples on this slide. We had a helmet giveaway, a community mural at the Bell Red Station, a Touch a Truck event, which I know we're gonna have that at Marymore Village with the Redmond's EV fire engine is gonna be out there for the community to engage with. And then we also will have a handful of performing local groups that will be both at the Downtown Station as well as the Marymore Village Station. So a little bit about who is gonna be activating the stations. We've had great partners through this whole process. Move Redmond, One Redmond, the City of Redmond. The staff has been wonderful to work with in terms of activating the station and the surrounding areas, the Redmond Town Center and Downtown Park. But Move Redmond at the Downtown Station, that number is wrong now. We have over 70 groups that are actually gonna be onsite at the Downtown Station. So these include, you know, some of our nonprofit partners, as well as performing artists and food vendors as well. A big piece of the, the thing that's gonna be highlighted at the Downtown Station is going to be those trail connections. So there are, East Trail Partners is putting together some bike rides to the event. Cascade Bike Club is gonna be doing a valet because we also know there's gonna be a lot of people. So we're gonna need to stage those bikes so that folks can get on the, the system. And then Africans on the east side are gonna be programming the Downtown Stage. And then down at Marymore Village, there's gonna be an equally sizable celebration, which I think we're up to over 60 groups now. But King County Parks is gonna be activating both of the trail connections down there, and we'll have a handful of our other local nonprofits that are gonna be onsite and engaging with the community. And then, just in terms of visuals, we are gonna be having a lot of that two-line branding again to continue familiarizing our riders with the two-line. And there will be a commemorative map giveaway as well. If you've been collecting those from previous station openings, we'll be doing that again. I think that rounds us out. Thank you.
Well, thank you both very much. I think you both know how excited I am and everyone else in this, in this diocese. So anyone have questions for our team from Sound Transit? Comments, questions? No? All right. Councilmember Stewart, yes?
Well, I'll just thank you so much, both of you, for all of your work leading up to this big day. The entire community is so excited. One of the things I really appreciate about Sound Transit, I just wanted to shout this out, thank you, but also make sure the public is aware. You know, all of the beautiful graphics with the beautiful smiling faces all around the station areas, those are hometown locals. So could you tell us a little bit about the community members who are featured and how that program kind of works? And if you're able to, another big thing about the Downtown Station is the amount of art in that space. Can you tell us, you know, how much art is down there? And anything, anything you want to tell us to make sure that folks, while they're enjoying the celebration, also take a moment to appreciate all of that?
Of course. Oh, my gosh, I love this question. So we have been working with the Redmond community for a very long time. Between planning for the initial segment of the two-line, like back 2008 time period to now, we have about 15-plus years' experience working with the Redmond community. So a lot of the folks who are visually up on the stations, you'll see them, their photos. Please, everybody, go find yourself or your neighbor up on the stations. Those are folks that have been with us and part of our community engagement throughout the project. So that's how they've, they've found themselves there. I can't tell you the whole list of folks, but there's 30-plus. There's, there's a lot of them. For the artwork in particular, we have a 1% of our capital program dedicated to arts at Sound Transit. So each of our, I won't even just say light rail stations. Each of our capital projects at Sound Transit has an art component to it. So at the Downtown Station, there are several artists recognized through murals, through billboards, through other types of artist visualizations. So I encourage everybody to go down there and check it out. There are also art exhibits at the Marymore Village Station, including some hot air balloon hanging features. I don't, I'm not an artist. I feel like I'm not giving it justice. Inside the parking facility, it's actually very beautiful. Who knew, I would say, that a parking facility has amazing artwork? But please go check it out. There's a lot of art within our system, and I encourage people to go to see it.
Great, thanks so much. Any other questions or comments for our guests? Well, thank you both so very much for sharing all this with our community, and I look forward to seeing both of you and hopefully, most of our community out on Saturday at 10:30. So thank you so much. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
The next, oh, can you stop sharing your presentation, Ariel? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. I do want to share with you a little bit about the teen center because we have a lot of community members here who are going to speak on it, and I'm very excited to hear what they have to say. But as you are aware, in March, we moved teen programs from the Old Firehouse Teen Center to the Redmond Community Center at Marymore Village and other facilities. The Old Firehouse building faces serious challenges, including the presence of hazardous materials and structural issues. We have kept the building safe for occupancy through our careful maintenance protocols, but that effort has become increasingly demanding and unsustainable. The presence of hazardous materials means that any damage or repair work to the structure requires extensive mitigation to protect the health of staff and visitors. We know we can't continue hosting teen services in the building in its current state. So we chose to proactively move teens to ensure we could, could continue to meet the needs of our community while city council and I work with the community to determine the future of the facility. No decision has been made yet about the future of the building, and council will decide the next steps for the building through a public process. This process will include several county council study sessions. And while we are working on issues facing the teen center, we are also seeking community feedback on what teens and the community needs, need from the city's teen programs. We have been having a lot of great conversations with community members, including listening sessions. We also have online options for sharing feedback and asking questions at redmond.gov/teenservices. There, you can send comments or questions to the project team and read through some facts or take a questionnaire to help us understand what you need from teen services. And at this point, most teen programs are set up in their new locations, and we will continue with our full lineup of great concerts. So with that, I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you'll come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Council members generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are, are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 4217A555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to the city of Redmond business as indicated on the sign-in sheet.
And there are 15 people signed up to speak tonight, and I have two people signed up to speak online. Any written comment has been distributed to the council, and I said that? So I'm gonna, I try to call like the four names at a time or so so you know when you're up next. We're going to start with Forrest Crabbe, then Chester Anderson, then Clara Bannon, then Cameron Collins.
Hello. I know I've introduced myself twice already, but I will continue to tell you my name as long as you do not hear us. My name is Forrest. I'm 16, and I live in Kenmore, Washington. I go to school in Bothell, Washington. I take three buses to Redmond, resulting in an hour and a half bus ride, as you know. I've had very limited experience at Marymore due to its inaccessibility, but the experience I have had has been incredibly eye-opening and frustrating. There's a difference between, and, oh, my gosh. I, man, I'm tired. There is a difference between being heard and someone listening to you. Sure, I've been listened to. My words are written in a document, looked at maybe once a month, if that, but I have not been heard. Hearing requires action. Hearing requires you to listen to our words and consider how you've affected us. Hearing requires a mind open to listening kids 20 years younger. I'm sad seeing the way you look at us, your legacy, the future. I'm sad seeing the furniture that we all expressed we dislike, even hate, moved into a building despite our protest. I played a show at Marymore. I was so, so glad to see my friends I hadn't seen in weeks. Try not to think about the firehouse. I kept an open mind best I could. I was transported in a city van to Marymore. We arrived at the building, and me and my friends stood there for a moment. We stood in a moment of silence, recognizing what was happening. We'd been taken away from the place we loved. The rest of the time there had an undercurrent of frustration and sadness. I kept tripping over, nailed down- I've been told the senior center will be better, but it's just scattering our programs even further. I wish I didn't have to see the ashes of the firehouse being dusted around Redmond. Listening session wasn't much better. I felt unwelcome in this space that is now supposed to be mine. I just kept feeling like I wasn't supposed to be there. And I'll wrap this up with, I think you know what needs to happen. I look at all of you, and I've expressed this over and over again. You know what needs to happen, and you know how to make it happen. So, please, thank you.
Next. We don't clap during Items From the Audience, but thank you. I think some people wave hands, which is kind of nice and quiet and great. So, we try to get through all the speakers without any kind of other noise. Next, we have Chester Anderson, Clara Bannon, Cameron Collins, and then Wesley Grandmont.
I am a person who very seldom cries. Yes, I feel my emotions very strongly, but only on rare occasions do I break down into tears. I did not cry once when I found out the firehouse is closing. At first, I was barely affected. I saw it coming. The one time these past few months I have almost lost my composure was when I performed in the classroom at Merrymore. I had performed there before at the open house, and we'd all laughed and agreed it was a joke of a venue, not knowing we would be expected to take it seriously one day. I had signed up to perform at the firehouse on April 18th, but since it was MCC, I neglected to fill my duty of unofficial ambassador. It no longer felt important or something to look forward to, rather a dreaded obligation. As soon as I walked in, I felt none of the warmth and love of the firehouse. Instead, I was 15 again, mustering the courage to go downstairs on a day the firehouses closed, and I was forced to stay home. The setup was fine. I could at least hear out of the speakers now. Some of us in the room may not know what a speaker is, but it's something you hear music out of, you know? And I still had fun because, only because all my friends were there to support me. I did not want to cry because the venue was bad or because it was in the firehouse. It was because I realized that by hesitating to fight for OFH, you and I alike, people who try so hard to be good and righteous people, had a hand in robbing our youth of a once-in-a-lifetime experience, a lifeline for the future of our culture. The only thing the city has done to motivate me to keep my spirits up is to show us how hilariously out of touch they are with Redmond and give us the privilege of watching the mayor and parks director's reasoning fall apart in real time. Every time I see the council starting to actually listen to us, to really care about the firehouse, I finally start to feel optimistic that our teens will feel valued. Thank you.
Next is Clara Bannon, then Cameron Collins, then Wesley Grandmont, then it's Martin Berger.
Hello. My name is Clara. I'm 16, and I'm a resident of Kirkland. It's super cool to be here. I love city council. I believe that the teen services will thrive with active participation and collaboration from both teens and city officials in planning for the future as well as any potential closure of the Old Firehouse. My sign back there says, "Teens on the Council," and I believe this exactly is the path to an outcome where as many parties as possible are content. Many of my peers here are discontent with the new teen services and claim that there is no valid reason that the firehouse building cannot be occupied. The Save OFH initiative is asking that if no safety concern is present, why can't the building remain open? I encourage anyone that is listening to go through and read the website, to hear a little bit about why the teens are expressing the things that they are. I understand and empathize with city officials who have to make difficult decisions about sentimental buildings. I'm not one who will say absolutely the only outcome is that the firehouse remains open. But this brings me to my main point of confusion and one that I think needs to be revisited and that I would like all decision-making members to think about. These teens are upset, and I believe that they deserve a clear reason about why the firehouse has to be closed. Can we sort, like, the specific issues for our teens? We aren't necessarily opposed to hearing gross facts about mold or lead paint or what will happen if we're in a building that is unsafe for us to occupy. But I think what is most frustrating for my friends is that they don't understand why they're being told no, and instead, they just believe that they're not being listened to. When it comes to decision-making regarding teen services, it is vital that teens remain involved. If this is not how the transition of locations began, please, let's include them now. Thank you.
Next. Next is Cameron Collins, then Wesley Grandmont, then Martin Berger, then Lauren Dancy.
I'm Cameron Collins. I am from Seattle. Grew up in Seattle. Grew up in Seattle in the 1990s. I am now an attorney and a professor at Seattle University and do a bunch of stuff with the sounders and in my community. I grew up during a time of the teen dance ordinance, which, if you're not familiar with Seattle history, was a law that banned all-ages shows in Seattle. So, at the same time Seattle was the music hub for the entire world, Nirvana was breaking, all these other bands are blowing up, I couldn't go to concerts unless they were at some giant venue. What does that mean for teens when they don't have a place to go? Well, you went to house shows, you went to other unsafe places where there's alcohol, where there's drugs, and there can be bad things that you get exposed to. What the history of OFH has done for this community is create a safe space, and this is really important. People have worked really hard to provide a safe opportunity for the youth, and if that's the purported reason that you're closing it, then I think you need to make those studies happen that would prove that it is unsafe rather than just making that assumption. Because the new services being provided, the youth are not going to choose to do those. That is not the same. It's not a like-for-like comparison, and so you're going to push them out into these unsafe places where they're going to seek out arts and musics and other things, and it's going to be like Seattle was during the 90s. You know, thankfully, we're not there anymore in Seattle. We have lots of teen centers. In fact, Vero Project is based off of what the old Redmond Firehouse is. So, I would hope that you rethink this process and do it transparently and open and really figure out what is best for the kids. Because rather than making this about a safety issue here or a safety issue there, let's do those studies and find out what are the safety issues and how do we ensure a safe place for the kids to go. Thank you.
Next is Wesley Grandmont, then Martin Berger, then Lauren Dancy, then Wolf Adriatico.
Hello. My name is Wes Grandmont. Thanks for having the opportunity to talk tonight. I'd like to address an issue that has deeply impacted our community, the abrupt and unnecessary closure of the Old Firehouse Teen Center. This decision has caused immense emotional distress for the teenagers who relied on this space for therapy, artistic expression, and a sense of belonging. If the closure was truly unavoidable, then a suitable replacement, one with adequate facilities and services, should have been established before shutting the doors on a place so vital to our youth. The city has been aware of the building's issues for quite some time, which means that proper planning and execution were not just possible but necessary. My father is a civil engineer, a graduate of MIT, and my close friend is an architect who specializes in lead paint and asbestos abatement. Based on their expertise, the reasons for closing the teen center do not hold up. Yes, the building has lead paint, asbestos, and an aging HVAC system, but these factors do not pose an immediate threat unless disturbed. Unless teens are actively peeling paint off the walls or removing asbestos shingles, the building remains a safe and usable space. The manner in which this decision was made has left our teenagers feeling abandoned. They have lost their sanctuary, a place where they found support, purpose, and community. I have seen firsthand the effects of this closure on my son. His struggle these past few months has been heartbreaking. I can only imagine how devastating this is for seniors who are about to graduate. For four years, they have called this place home. Now, in what should be the most memorable time of their high school journey, they're instead forced to fight for something that should have never been taken away from them. These students should have been allowed to remain in the firehouse until a well-thought-out replacement was ready, but it's not too late. There's still a path forward. Let these kids return and finish their senior year in the place that has shaped them. The firehouse stands empty. Let it serve its purpose once more. More than that, let's come together as a community and take action. Let's set a goal to raise funds and restore this cherished building. Let's be a community that uplifts those who need us most. Someone in this room has the power to change the course of these teens' lives, to bring joy and meaning back. Let that someone be you. Thank you.
Next is Martin Berger, then Lauren Dancy, then Wolf Adriatico, then, I'll get this next name. Come on up, Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bernie. Thank you, councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to once again offer testimony before you today. I am, I've been a longtime resident of Redmond. I'm 27 years old. I work in the public sector. Like, I'm no longer the target audience for the teen facility. My days there are behind me, so it's mostly through a lens of nostalgia that I view this and a feeling of obligation towards the other people of my community. We have continued to come together, to listen to each other, to try to find a constructive way to work with you and the Parks Department and find a way that we can navigate the challenges that the aging building presents. The challenges aren't anything new. 10 years ago, when I was a teen, it was already known then that the building had material issues. The staff was aware that certain areas had to be restricted and made teens aware that we had to be careful about maintaining the structure and not causing any damage through rough housing or other plays that teens do. The assessment that was shared by the Parks Department doesn't notably show a deterioration compared to what the condition of the facility was 10 years ago. Yes, there is need for structural overhaul and reform, but I do not see this sudden degradation that has caused a tipping point that has been cited again and again. We would really appreciate some transparency about what exactly has changed compared to five years ago that has now mandated that it be closed all of a sudden before input from the public can be sought. Giving people the involvement and sense of agency that they have a say in what happens to their home and to their community is absolutely vital. I think each and every one of you who has chosen to pursue a career in the public sector understands this, and I hope that the course forward will see a change from the direction that we've seen over the past few weeks, where the Parks Department survey seems to already guide people towards choosing between false binary of services, not locations, and pushing people towards a foregone conclusion of moving away from the teen center and not having a dedicated public space. We all lived through COVID. We know how important it is to have a public space to come together and gather. I don't think I need to astound the benefits of that to you all. Please listen to these teens. Please overhaul and change the current process so that they are listened to in good faith. Thank you for your time.
Next is Lauren Dancy, then Wolf Adriatico, and I think it's Corvus Dewey, Duney? And then Sasha Glenn.
Hello. My name is Lauren Dancy. My friends know me as Lizzie. I am a homeowner and a mother. I had a teen, they're 19 now. They went by Lucas, and they went to the Old Firehouse Teen Center for several years. When I dropped them off at the old teen center, I felt secure, knowing it was a safe place for my teen. I cannot emphasize this distinction enough. There were no onerous adults lurking in close proximity to my teenager, nor was the teen center facility providing services to non-teen homeless members of our community. In contrast, both Merrymore Park and the Senior Center are both utilized by the area homeless, and people are not screened upon entry, as was done at the teen center. The Old Firehouse Teen Center was a Redmond icon. It's possible we may lose the Old Firehouse, but let's make sure Redmond's heritage of having a teen center remains. Let us not be fooled into thinking that dividing teen services between Merrymore Park and the Senior Center is an acceptable solution. Let us not lose sight of the need for a teen center to remain in Redmond, a teen center. Old Firehouse was incredibly awesome, but the choice is not Old Firehouse or divided teen services. There is a third option. I urge you to respect the needs of Redmond's teens' community and consider the viability of creating a new teen center if the Old Firehouse is not salvageable. Don't let the dream of a teen center in Redmond die. I implore you, for the sake of my five-year-old daughter and my one-year-old son, who one day will too be teenagers, I will not be dropping them off at the curb at either proposed teen services replacement locations because neither is a safe place for teens. There could be anyone there. Thank you.
Next is Wolf Adriatico, and then Corvus Denny, maybe? And then Sasha Glenn.
Hello. I've provided images of teen commentary on the city's rendering of Merrymore's eminent furnishings, half of which have already been moved in. These were taped onto the desk with the promise that the city would use it in considerations. However, nothing was done with them until the session on April 28th, when the papers were taken after furniture was already purchased and the decision was concrete. The person we handed it to didn't even know it existed beforehand. It's a farce of listening to feedback, trying to pacify us. Sad thing is, from the start, we knew the city wouldn't look at it. I would ask, I would ask, what does the city consider diverse and underserved populations? This is a quote from the Recreation Program Plan, "to focus engagement efforts on diverse and underserved populations." On April 22nd, the city claimed that OFH was inaccessible because those in Merrymore couldn't get there. Their solution, obviously, is to relocate our services to Merrymore, disregarding the many OFH tendees who came before this council and voiced how this decision, and yes, it was a decision, affected them. By design, OFH benefits atypical, underserved people foremost. Merrymore teens don't come to RCCMV. Almost nobody does, out of the few who can. I'm there every day, and rarely do I see another teen. On April 23rd, the drop-in was being painted until around six, three hours after opening. I arrived and had to sit in the lobby filled with adults and children, all strangers. I didn't feel remotely comfortable. OFH staff let me join guitar lessons that day so I wouldn't be alone in the lobby with strangers. After, drop-in remained unavailable because of the painting, so we hung outside until six more strangers and more eyes. I felt out of place, misfit, and I stuck out like the mayor would if she walked into the Old Firehouse. On April 30th, an adult walked all the way to the back of the drop-in, looking for a mirror without saying anything until firehouse staff asked. Not even the drop-in is dedicated to us. The city claims to want our feedback, to listen, to extend outreach, yet we're right here. Your community is already here with their heart on their sleeves, speaking our minds. Just listen. We shouldn't have to play politics. The city feigns transparency in this arduous process. How is it then that plans were made to transfer us to Merrymore, to build a new recording studio there? Who decided to evict us? Don't you dare say that nothing has been decided, that there were no backdoor dealings. Oops, accidentally made this whole plan in rendering and signed off on it. Someone is responsible. Decisions were made that we had no part in. Nonetheless, they were made, and they affect us. Cut the crap. Thanks to some of you. Others, I hope you sleep at night. I don't. Also, last May 2nd, half the furniture from the teen lounge rendering was moved in despite overwhelming negative feedback from the teens and the community at large. I felt somehow more out of place than in the empty inclusion. And then in the empty paint-fuming room, the continuance of the city's plans, despite vehement disapproval, is indicative of the city's ignorance of its citizens. Thank you.
Next is Corvus Denny, I think, Sasha Glenn, Daniel Kathler, and then Kaia Rubin. Is it Corvus? No. Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I wanted to talk about something that really opened my eyes as an experience. Last Tuesday, when the study session was held, I was there, and I was taking notes. I don't remember which one of you exactly, but one of you- Sasha Glenn, Daniel Kathler, and then Kaia Rubin. Is it Corvus? No. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. I wanted to talk about something that really opened my eyes as an experience. Last Tuesday, when the study session was held, I was there and I was taking notes. I don't remember which one of you exactly, but one of you stated that buildings do not represent us as a community, and it made me think a lot. Better? Yeah. Okay. Simply just because it made me realize that we also need to give more information. Information of the fact that we and the teen center was one of the most non-judging spaces when it came to specifically the alternative community. We, in the alternative community, have not great representation, and our life choices are mocked and scolded by many, many people, and it is hard. While most buildings should not represent communities, the Old Firehouse did for us. We gave everything we had to that building. And the fact that it is being taken away is indeed sad. I'm hoping that maybe if the building does end up having to be removed, then we can find a proper replacement that we can call our home. But until then, I'm going to continue fighting for what I believe in, and I believe that the Firehouse's name and reputation should be held to a higher standard. And the fact that it is the most amazing place I've ever been to. Thank you for your time.
Next is Sasha Glenn, and then Daniel Kathler, then Kaia Rubin, then Linda Seltzer.
I had somewhat of a speech prepared, but I think I'll just talk to you frankly at this point. You know, we all learned just several weeks back of this abrupt prompt closure with no clear reasoning behind it of the historic Old Firehouse, right before spring break, right before summer break. You can see now that we've gathered nearing 4,000 signatures from the public. We haven't even ramped up our outreach campaign to its full potential yet. My question is, why put these kids through this? Why put the community through this? I'm talking to community members every day, and multiple generations are saying that now they cannot trust the mayor or city council because there's a pattern of just stepping over engagement with the community and taking away a community space before having any discussions. The City of Redmond had an FAQ page up, which, thank goodness, I preserved a copy of, that said that the building of OFH is currently safe for occupancy. That's now been taken down and replaced with a much shorter FAQ page, but I do have that record. And we do not understand why, if it's safe for occupancy, these kids have been displaced in order to prevent displacing them later. That makes no sense, three weeks' notice, not going and having any engagement first. Basically, waltzing and bullying the staff, the employees, and the teens and trying to destroy something that is precious to this state, to the Pacific Northwest. It's just shameful. We all have tried to give you the benefit of the doubt. We came to the study session on April 28th, that you said that we'd finally get some reasons. Guess what? Unfortunately, no reasons were given. In fact, the presentation provided by Director Hamilton just confirmed that this was done backwards and wrong, that there has been nothing but a mere glance walkthrough, that I wouldn't trust if I was even buying a house, to say that things are rated, that door's a three, that door's a two, that post. And when Director Hamilton was questioned about that, she herself didn't even know what the numbers meant that she based her decision on. My point here is, you can still be a credible person in the community after making the wrong decision, but only if you do the right thing, once you learn that decision is wrong. We again urge you to immediately reopen, and I know it's ready because it's still not packed up all the way and it's in great condition, and I know that the plans for classes were already mapped out and everybody's willing to go back there that was going before. We urge you to immediately reopen the teen center, even if it's temporary while you engage in this process so the community can trust you and not feel like it's being kicked in the face. Okay? So I hope you do the right thing with that. I believe you can do that, and if you, by your own admission and your own Parks Director's report, say it's safe, then there needs to be a reason given why you won't temporarily reopen. Thank you.
Next is Daniel Kathler, Kaia Rubin, Linda Seltzer, Max Ruhlman.
Well, I'm supposed to go after that. I think most, most things that I was gonna say have already been covered by everybody else who's gone. Thank you. You know, said it a lot better than I could have, but I, I think that you owe the community more transparency in your plans for the future of the building, what legitimate findings you have for showing that it's, you know, not suitable for the purposes that it's been serving for the past 30 years, 30-plus years. What plans you have for, you know, future programs within the, the Marymore thing, right? For music performances, right? You know, because that lecture hall's not gonna cut it, let's be real. Music recording, you know, cams here, right? A good digital recording studio for, that's accessible and affordable for teens to use, right? I think everything should be, should be published and there should be actual reasons stated for things closing down and, you know, proposed ideas for the future and better consideration of the voices of our community. Thank you.
Next is Kaia Rubin, then Linda Seltzer, then Max Ruhlman, and then David Morton.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Kaia. I'm 19, and I'm a singer-songwriter. My band, Anchor Management, has performed at the Old Firehouse a ton. The band is by far one of the most important parts of my life, and it wouldn't be alive if it weren't for the Old Firehouse. The Firehouse was the first venue my band ever played at, and it's necessary to emphasize just how rare and challenging it is to find venues in the area that are easily accessible for teens. The Firehouse was open and free for all ages, and whenever I had friends who started a band, I would immediately tell them about OFH. My band would not be where it is if we didn't have the Firehouse because without it, we would have never been able to perform in the first place. Performing at the Firehouse inspired me to take my art and myself seriously. It changed my life. Not only was the staff always incredibly kind, encouraging, and supportive, they also welcomed everybody who stepped foot in there with open arms. On top of that, the building itself is rich with irreplaceable history. It has been a constant source of art that has housed so many impactful musicians since the 90s. Teens need a space to be able to create without limits, and that space and the location of that space make a difference. As a creative person and a performer, I know that environment impacts creativity. The performance space at the Redmond Center and the Community Center is sterile, it's not for teens, it's not for rock music, and it cannot replace the Old Firehouse. So I implore you to please save it. Thank you.
Next is Linda Seltzer, then Max Ruhlman, and then David Morton.
So I looked at the agenda for the meeting tonight and saw that there's a proposal for property tax exemption to build buildings that would have about 12% affordable housing.
Ms. Seltzer, can, can I interrupt you just a moment? We are having a public hearing on that, if you want to stay for that, to talk about that item. If there's something else you want to talk to, an item from the audience, we'll sign you up for the.
Okay. Okay, so the other thing that I will talk about is that in this meeting, I just heard a proclamation for Asian American Heritage Month and Older Americans Month, but somehow they excluded that this month is also, which I'm going to proclaim now, Jewish Americans' Heritage Month. And somebody once gave me this totally fallacious excuse, saying that Jews are a religion, so they don't get to have Heritage Month because religions don't get it. Jews are a people. Jews are a people who are, have ancient indigeneity in Israel. Israel is our, and throughout the whole Middle East, not just Israel. DNA shows that, historical artifacts show that, and history shows that. So do not deny that Jews are a people and stop excluding Jews. Jews were excluded from page 32 of the Redmond 2050 Social Services document, and now they're excluded from having our Heritage Month announced. So I think this community and this council and the city government needs to really examine the problems and your attitudes towards the Jewish community. We had no participation in that whole social services plan for two years. In other words, I don't know enough about senior citizens' needs for medical care or anything else, and so I'm not qualified because I'm, I'm Jewish to participate in that, in that diversity. So, yeah, I'm going to proclaim that this is Jewish American Heritage Month, and about the teen center, I want people to know that I notified the council, there is another building diagonally across from the current Firehouse in that office-based complex that I believe is not used. There's one building that's owned by Nelson, there's another that's owned by Protingent Staffing. It's an enclosed building and space, and it could serve as a temporary space. And then for the music concerts, the gym and the Redmond Elementary School could serve as a concert venue, possibly if an arrangement is made with the Lake Washington School District. They have music in that gym all the time. Thank you.
Next is Max, and then David Morton.
Hello. I'm a member of staff, and all views expressed are my own. The decision to close the doors of the Firehouse was a mistake. It was a decision made by very few individuals with limited information. During the study session, it was said that no decision has been made, and yet the decision was made to close the facility due to all the reasons that have been expressed. Further yet, the decision was made to close and lock the Firehouse's doors and abruptly move programs to a mixed facility on the very outskirts of town where teens can't even put art on the walls. So it leads me to feel like someone made a decision, judgment call, or whatever it's gonna be called, and the lack of information makes it feel backhanded, callous, and deceitful. The status quo doesn't seem like it's working. Teens that are once relied on these lifesaving programs are now actively missing access and suffering because of it. The teens that can still access the programs are painfully aware of what the facility is lacking, and as hard as the staff try, and they do try, they do try, the missing faces and lackluster atmosphere make the programs a shadow of what they once were, and it has been one month. In summary, you're going to see the effects of this decision. Teens without a place to go will instead recreate where they are standing, and I fear that it will be dangerous. Even while writing the speech and going back to the teen services Q and A, what was supposed to be our lifeline of information, I saw that the almost 30 official questions have been shortened to about six. Why? In the Q and A, there are contradictions both within the document and with what is actually happening. It was said that the relocation of teen programs from the Old Firehouse Teen Center is a permanent change. It was also said that no decisions have been made. So if it's permanent, it feels like a decision, at least to me. It was said that program offerings will remain largely the same, and yet we lack the people that made those programs vibrant. In the Redmond Park Plan, it is glaring how little it mentions the Old Firehouse, and when it does, it failed to recognize the qualities that make it a safe haven in Redmond, a beacon of creativity, and an incredible, incredible place for personal growth. In the plan, it was said if a co-located joint facility is not advanced and no replacement facility is identified for the teen center, the city should renovate and replace systems to extend the existing facility's service life. I worry that this decision was made to justify purchasing Marymore Village from L-Dub Tech. If you ask any teen, they will tell you they need their own space and not some co-located high-density facility. I ask that we, as a city, rethink where the Firehouse stands in our community and not limit its significance to being merely an aging building. It is so, so much more. I'll, yeah. It is so much more. Where am I at?
In conclusion.
It is a part of the soul of Redmond and an anchor for youth who might not have one otherwise. I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Next is David Morton.
Good evening, I'm David Morton. I'm here tonight to advocate for stronger, more forward-thinking waste reduction policies to help Redmond meet its goal of community-wide carbon neutrality by 2050. Waste is often the overlooked piece of the climate puzzle, but the emissions tied to the production, transportation, and disposal of materials are significant and avoidable. Let's make smart changes that reduce our impact and build a cleaner, healthier city. I'll start with mandatory composting for both residents and businesses. Food waste in landfills releases methane, a greenhouse gas over 80 times more potent than carbon dioxide in the short term. With a citywide composting requirement, expanded curbside pickup, and robust public education, we can dramatically reduce organic waste and create high-quality compost for use in parks, gardens, and local farms. Next, I strongly support a city ban, a citywide ban on single-use plastics like bags, utensils, clamshell containers, and straws. These items are used once, but they persist in our environment for generations. Let's replace them with compostable or reusable alternatives. Other cities have done this with great success, and so can Redmond with strong outreach and phase-in timelines. Let's also implement circular economy incentives, policies that encourage local businesses to redesign processes, reduce packaging waste, and reuse materials instead of discarding them. That could include tax credits, grant programs, or public recognition. It's about turning waste into value and keeping resources in the local economy longer instead of shipping them off to the landfill. Fourth, we need to tighten construction and demolition waste recycling requirements. The building industry is one of the largest contributors to landfill volume. Requiring contractors to separate and divert recyclable materials like wood, concrete, and metals would dramatically cut waste-related emissions and support local recycling markets. Finally, it's time to introduce pay-as-you-throw pricing for cl, for trash collection. This system charges households based on how much garbage they generate, like utilities do for water and electricity. It's proven to reduce landfill waste and increase recycling and composting rates, all while making the system more equitable. These policies can help build a zero-waste future for Redmond, one that's cleaner, smarter, and more just. It takes, it's time to take bold, effective action. Thank you for your time and leadership.
We have two individuals when I speak remotely, but I was concerned when I heard that we were missing some items on the fact, and so I went to the webpage, and there's a show all answers at the top. And when you click on that, all 35 facts show up with their answers. We're also trying to update it as we go along, so as we get more information, yes, some of the facts do change because we're getting more information. So I just want to clarify that for the public, that the information is there. You just have to hi, show all answers there. Next we have, first we have Joe Kunsler, and then Noah Radford.
Good evening, Mayor Bernie, is that you?
Yes, Mr. Kunsler, you have three minutes to address the council.
Yippee, woohoo! Thank you, Mayor! It's such a privileged honor. I was watching channel surfing between the Bedgeland City Council and the Redmond City Council and waiting for my call, and I'm so happy to call in to prepare to celebrate the Golden Age with President Vanessa Kurtser this Saturday, that I even told the Bellevue City Council all about the Golden Age and all about the great white rail stations we're gonna have, and I even had to apologize to the poor Bellevue City Council for the fact that they're the second-best city on the east side. We all know who the best city is, it's Redmond. And it's such a, I'm so excited for this new Redmond link that's gonna come, it's gonna provide more mobility to people of all ages, to hopefully provide a connection to a new to a new teen center. Yes, I heard all the complaints. But I am so stoked for Sound Transit Free to begin in a city of love and courage and honor and valor and integrity, a city with good leaders, a city with a great president. Did I tell you that President Kurtser is great? Of course I did. That Super Jews did a great job, you know, taking the fight to the terrorists, whether it's in Yemen or here at home with Alex Zimmern currently excluded for three months. That's such wonderful news. And I'm so proud of our president and our exceptional, everybody's favorite vice president. And I am so grateful for this council to preside over this city and to bring Sound Transit Free magic and joy, where you'll be able to have reliable public transportation, where you won't have to be like in Skagit County, where you have to be five or ten minutes early and hope you catch that one bus an hour. It is so different, and it's so hopeful and electrifying that we have this opportunity, this championship opportunity to bring world-class, environmentally-friendly transit to the world in a golden age of courage and innovation in public service. You know, Sound Transit also represents, if I may say so, in my glee and excitement, you know, Sound Transit also is a role model to all the other transits, how the Wayfind, because Sound Transit Wayfinding is so good, and the graphics by Liz Trunkie are nothing short of genius and artistic. And I'm so, so happy that, you know, and I want the people of Redmond to also know, your mayor, when you represented you at the Sound Transit Board, she was working every single minute of that meeting. She was, before the meeting, she arrived early, was on the phone, on the laptop, working away. I just want you guys to know that. You know, but I am so, I'm counting down the days, the minutes, to the ribbon-cutting of the greatest light rail extension in the history of Sound Transit. And I'm so grateful, Jewish American Month, that we have a Jewish president who has stood up the evil and won. And I am so, I'm so excited for all of you. I can barely contain my glee, and I also finally want to say, as I said a couple weeks ago, I do want to thank all those who've used public comment. It's why I lobby the legislators are hard. And I think my three minutes are up. It's going to be a great Saturday. Pardon, pardon, pardon.
Mr. Kunsler, your time is up.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Bye. See you Friday, Saturday.
Noah, Mr. Noah Radford is next. Council President Kurtser.
Thank you, Mayor Bernie. I just wanted to make a comment based on the last commenter. Just a note, I have not stated any foreign policy positions during any council meeting, and I just wanted to make it known that I don't know. The previous commenter decided to comment on opinions that he professed were my own that I have never expressed on this council. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarity. Thank you. You have three minutes to address the council.
Two weeks ago, Councilmember Nueva Camina gave a statement on the old firehouse, keystone of which was the phrase, "Loss is not in a building," and that is a wonderful sentiment in a vacuum, but it rings hollow coming from someone who appears to be losing nothing, much less from someone dictating the very decision that hundreds of people who need it must give it up. My hat is off to Councilmember Fields. Even if he did borrow my one-liner about being obviously not a teenager, he is more than welcome to it if he continues to hold Mayor Bernie, Parks Director Hamilton, and the rest of the council to task. I was surprised and impressed by him. He asked Mayor Bernie her intentions point-blank, and she waffled. Bless him for pressing, but even without a direct answer, it is no surprise that developers are all but foaming at the mouth to snatch up that last little drop of heritage in Redmond. And when you live in the Seattle area, it's something you expect but never get used to. But if there is one thing that people in this area know, it's that the East Side, and Redmond is no exception, has money. Studies show people who have money are generally never satisfied with what they have after a certain point. And even if Mayor Bernie's joining the Greater Seattle Partners the same month as the closure of the firehouse was announced is indeed just a coincidence, we are hardly living in an age of philanthropy. Council, if your concern is truly the firehouse's condition and the children's safety, then build a new, dedicated teen center right in the same place, right on the same spot. Dare to show dedication to your community and nestle it right where the teens need it, and show us that loss is not in the building. Many years ago, my dad and I fell off a slide in a Redmond park, and I broke my arm. I was five. We drove by just a few weeks later, and the slide had been torn down. I learned then that political wheels will turn very quickly when they're properly motivated, and you are currently teaching young people, many of whom will be voters in time for your reelection, the exact same lesson. Thank you.
Items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled? Seeing none, this is a roll-call vote. Oh, I have ordinance to read in the record first, sorry. Ordinance number thirty-two thirteen, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending RMC five four four zero six zero. Return required. Due dates and payment to change the frequency of due dates and payment for telephone business, competitive telephone service, and cellular telephone service. This is a roll-call vote, starting with Council President Kurtser.
Aye.
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 That passes six to zero. Our next item of business is public hearing on the Redmond 2050 multifamily housing property tax exemption downtown Marymore and mixed use. Ian Leffort, senior planner, will introduce this item.
The purpose of this item is to receive community input on that proposal. The proposal will change the multifamily property tax exemption residential targeted areas. It will expand the downtown residential targeted area. It will expand the existing Marymore residential targeted area. And third, it will create a new mixed-use residential targeted area. This public hearing fulfills the commitment of Resolution Number sixteen oh two, which the council adopted on April fifteenth. Staff welcomes council input and questions, and the content will be discussed at the June third committee of the whole meeting. Adoption is tentatively scheduled for June seventeenth, and with that, staff concludes our remarks.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Leffort? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. The clerk's office received no request to speak remotely. We have two in person. We will start with Mr. David Morton and then Ms. Linda Seltzer.
I'm David Morton. I wish to comment on the proposed amendments to RMC Chapter three thirty-eight concerning the multifamily housing property tax exemption, or MFTE, program, specifically the expansion of the downtown and Marymore residential targeted areas, or RTAs, and the creation of a mixed-use RTA. I support the intent behind these proposed amendments. As outlined in Section ten, the primary purpose of the chapter is to increase the supply of multifamily housing within Redmond for low and moderate-income households and to promote community development and a diverse economic base. Expanding the geographic areas where the MFTE program can be applied is crucial for achieving these goals. Redmond's current housing market presents significant challenges for people seeking affordable options. Redmond's continued growth necessitates proactive measures to ensure that housing remains accessible to a diverse range of income levels. By expanding the RTAs, you create more opportunities for developers to utilize the MFTE program, incentivizing the creation of much-needed affordable housing units in Redmond's key areas. The proposed expansion of the downtown and Marymore RTAs aligns with the city's vision for vibrant, mixed-income neighborhoods in these important centers. The creation of a mixed-use RTA recognizes the potential for integrating affordable housing into a wider range of development projects, fostering more inclusive and sustainable communities. The details of these amendments are complex and require careful consideration. I urge the council to thoroughly review the proposed changes, ensuring that they are structured in a way that maximizes the creation of genuinely affordable units and includes robust mechanisms for long-term affordability, as outlined in Section one twenty. It's important to consider how these expansions will align with other city planning initiatives and infrastructure development. I encourage the council to consider the potential for alternative compliance, as mentioned in Section one seventy, to ensure flexibility and encourage innovative approaches to affordable housing development within these expanded areas. In conclusion, the proposed amendments to Chapter three thirty-eight represent a significant opportunity to address the growing need for affordable housing in Redmond. Expanding the RTAs creates more pathways for developers to contribute to a more inclusive and economically diverse city. I urge the council to approve these amendments and to continue prioritizing policies that promote housing affordability. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Seltzer.
Yes, my name is Linda Seltzer, and unlike the previous speaker, I actually live in one of the affected neighborhoods and streets. So I read this proposal, and it proposes to give a property tax break to developers for having twelve percent of their apartments or something like that included as affordable housing. But I actually, I looked at the map and was very distressed to find that the apartment complex where I live in, which is an already-existing, older, senior citizen affordable complex, is in that list, is on that map. And the whole square block where I live, where there's already older, existing affordable housing, and some of the lowest-priced apartments on the East Side are on that map. And then across the street from that is King County Public Housing, and then down the street from that is Emma McRedmond, which is affordable public housing, and then there's Azalea, which is King County Housing, and then another block down from that is the YWCA, you know, family shelter. So they're taking a neighborhood of already-existing, older, affordable housing and saying, well, now we're going to incentivize developers to build these buildings with twelve percent of it as affordable housing, and they're going to be more expensive than where we live now. So I don't understand how this whole thing works. I'm really opposed. Don't approve this with the existing maps. I mean, it's just going to, my landlord is going to be flooded with developers trying to get him to sell the building, and the other landlords will also. So this is not, this puts me in danger of homelessness. It puts my, you know, neighbors, like the people in my apartment complex, they're from Mexico and Kazakhstan and America and Germany and, you know, all over the place. And so, you know, we have Philippines, like, this is really, the apartment buildings next door are diverse. So why do they want to tear down all this diverse housing that's already there and incentivize developers to build on my square block? It makes no sense. So, and it's actually dangerous. So I mean, so the intent and the, you know, the concept are okay, but like, the map doesn't match like the intention, and it actually could prove to be dangerous and destructive rather than constructive and achieving the goals it wants to achieve. So, you know, I mean, I'm in my mid-seventies now, and we have people in our tenants, you know, who are going towards eighty. We've had people older than eighty. What are people supposed to do? All right. Thank you.
The public hearing is now closed. No action will be taken tonight. Draft ordinance at the six-three committee of the whole, and the staff can answer any questions as well, with action at the six-seventeen business meeting, along with all of the Redmond 2050 package. Councilmember Fields.
Thank you, Mayor. So I know that you asked us if we had questions before the public hearing. I just would like to ask a question now of staff for that study session.
That would be great. If you ask the question, they can answer it during that study session.
What I'd like to do is prepare them for the question, and I would like to get answers. As Ms. Seltzer testified, one of our big obligations in creating affordable housing is to protect affordable housing, so I'd like to see that as part of our discussion.
Thank you. Director Helen, you got that one? Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you, Ian. Any other questions or comments on this? Look forward to the study session. Thank you. Our next item of business is ombuds report. April, it was Councilmember Stewart, and then we'll jump into May with Councilmember Slahoudi.
Thank you. A bit of a lengthy report, so I do apologize in advance. First, I'll go over the council items and then some of my own personal items. The council received a repeated noise complaint from a downtown resident, and this was an ongoing issue from a few months back. I was able to work with staff and verify through code compliance that the noise that is occurring is in fact allowed by code. So the request to council is to review either the noise code or the signage requirements that could help, and there may be other noise ordinance work items that we could couple this with later in our work plan. Council also received a solicitation to purchase a museum-sized collection of military regalia. Council received feedback on the teen center closure and questions about the path forward. Others may have additional comments on this, but as ombuds, one of the things that was my duty to do was to share out the results from our study session on April twenty-second, where we learned that an engineer is being brought in to do a full structural assessment. They will also have access to the good faith and hazardous materials report as part of that review. Staff and the engineering report are expected back to report to council and the community in July. Once we have a better understanding of the structural safety concerns, we can then begin to identify possible paths forward and build a youth-centered, community engagement process to inform a decision. Council also received a question regarding the facility's condition assessment that has been referenced throughout this conversation, and we worked with staff to make sure a link to that assessment is now posted on the teen services page. On a different topic, council received a complaint and feedback about Diamond Parkings' management of the painted lot in downtown. This specific issue was resolved, and the feedback provided by that residence and her experience is really helpful. I hope that the council can take a look at the details of that email thread. Council received an invitation to a climate forum with Redmond People for Climate Action. I was not able to attend, but hopefully others were. Council received a request for financial support from a community-based festival, and there was an announcement from the library, and as a former library trustee, it is my absolute duty to let everyone know that summer reading program for youth starts on June seventh. This year's theme is curious creatures, and adults can play book bingo starting May nineteenth. Now, for a few of my own personal ombud items, I received a complaint regarding noise in Rose Hill. I also had a meeting request from a member of the Interlake Sporting Association. I declined that meeting. Just to note, a reminder, the City of Redmond received a complaint against the Interlake Sporting Association, and the association has provided the city with an answer to the complaint. The city is assessing if more information is needed and evaluating next steps according to Redmond Municipal Code five dot eighty. I had a phone call with Mr. Yoder regarding his feedback after the council study session on the teen center. He also sent additional comments following one of the teen services listening sessions. I met with a teen regarding their interest in a career in government and what to expect in terms of next steps for decision-making on the teen center. I learned and shared with the council that one of our two AmeriCorps fellows here at the city has been impacted by the federal administration's actions. It looks like Mayor Bernie is already working to make sure we can keep that person onboard and doing important work as a limited-duration employee, and I really appreciate the swift action so that that public servant can be made whole and our work can stay on track. Three quick event highlights. The city's gun buyback program was a big success. A hundred firearms that are unwanted or were maybe improperly stored were surrendered, and the event actually closed a little early when we ran out of gift cards to provide to residents. Last Friday, Council President Kurtser and I joined a tour on one fifty-sixth to learn more about the expansion of the shared use path between northeast forty-third and northeast fifty-first. The council had had concerns regarding tree removals in that area. This was a really- This was a really helpful tour, and I appreciate the many staff who took part, took time out of their Friday afternoon to make this possible. It was particularly important to understand the current impacts on the trees by the power lines and the really open-minded approach staff are taking to preserve as many trees as possible, and why some trees just are not salvageable, especially those that are most unhappy in the home that they have. Just a quick bonus for the council, Deputy Director Garcia really recommended that the whole council go and check out the now-completed project on 40th Street and that shared use path, so we can see firsthand how the trees were preserved through that project and how privately-owned trees are benefiting from the decreased competition in that area. So again, 40th Street, that project is complete. Deputy Director Garcia really recommends we all go check it out. And then this morning, we cut the ribbon on the city's first pedestrian scramble, all way crossing at 166th and Cleveland. It was awesome, and big kudos to the public works crew and everybody who made that possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Salhoudin?
Thank you. I have not received a ton this month in the six days that we've been in May, but I did just want to flag that we received public comment in written form with regard to the teen center, and I just want to say I really appreciate the engagement of all of the teens and making sure that, you know, your voice is heard. I know personally, myself and the entire council and mayor, we really encourage youth engagement, teen engagement, and want to make sure that although this is, you know, more of an unfortunate situation where you're coming to council, we want to make sure your voice is heard and that we are listening. So this is an ongoing conversation, as the mayor noted. I'm looking forward to having those conversations with you and all of the folks that are not teens, and making sure that we can, you know, figure out the right solution. So appreciate the emails that you've sent in so far and the testimony as well.
Thank you. Any other ombuds items? Councilmember Fields?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two items. I also received a communication from the interstate, whatever the gun club is called, sorry. And I checked with our city attorney as to what parameters or what restrictions could be made, and decided to take it offline and meet with that person, talking about the future issues. The others, I spent quite a while talking with somebody who testified tonight on the teen center, and the request was that council should make a motion to reopen the teen center. And I think that there's a lot of merit to that motion. And as I thought about it, I'm not prepared, number one. I'm not sure until I talk with the city attorney whether we can request the mayor to open it or we can direct the mayor to open it. I actually believe we can only request. So what I'm using this opportunity is to let my colleagues on the council know that in two weeks at the next business session, I will in fact make a motion to reopen the teen center within two weeks.
Council President Kritzer?
Thank you. A couple of the things that I would have reported on for ombuds were reported on by other council members, but I will highlight that I attended the Arbor Day celebration at Anderson Park, and we had a ton of residents there. It was really wonderful. We also had some of our nature explorers from our, some of our littlest residents who helped us to plant trees there to replace some that came down during the bomb cyclone. It was a really wonderful celebration. We also celebrated our new community gardens at Anderson Park and got to meet with some of the folks that have those plots who live in the apartments right nearby. So it was just a really wonderful celebration and great to see the community out enjoying that together and pitching in together to make our community greener. I'll also note that part of the reason I'm not there today is that I'm in Washington, DC, and had the chance today to speak with our representative Susan Delbene. In particular, was able to talk with her about issues that are relevant to the city, including salmon recovery funding, which President Trump has proposed to zero out all federal funding for Pacific Coast salmon recovery. So, and heard from her, her commitment to supporting that. I also wanted to just share that also, she also noted her support for AmeriCorps, which is also a big impact for our city. So just wanted to report back on that, and we'll share more insights with colleagues as I return. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items for ombuds? Seeing none, there is no unfinished business, there is no new business, there is no executive session.
Mayor Bernie, we have committee reports.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I skipped ahead. Committee reports, thank you so much, Councilmember Stewart. I suspect you have some committee reports, so I will, if it's all right, I'll start with you.
But it was Councilmember Salhoudin who didn't want us to miss. Do you have anything to share, Councilmember Salhoudin? Oh, man. Back to my voice. Back to our regularly scheduled programming. Very quickly, Growth Management Planning Board, we have now completed review on 36 comprehensive plans. Last week, we unanimously recommended Redmond 2050 for certification by the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board on their next consent agenda. So Mayor Bernie, I'll kick it to you from here. We also spent some time studying the poor production rates of moderate-sized homes, like two- and three-bedroom homes, since the Great Recession. Most ownership units are large, like four- and five-bedroom homes, and most overall housing that was produced in this time period was rental, and it was studio and one-bedroom rentals. So this data is helping us ask better questions as we set up performance monitoring for these comprehensive plans. I had a meeting with the National League of Cities Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee. We continue to study the impact of large data centers in municipalities. We had a presentation from a member organization, excuse me, a member municipality about their experience building out a large data center for their municipal operations and potentially leasing space in that data center to generate revenue for their city. So very interesting. Next week, the 2026 Legislative Priorities Committee kicks off for the Association of Washington Cities. I sent the council the link to the AWC Ledge Priorities Survey. Please respond to that survey by June 5th. And earlier tonight, for the one, two, three, six, seven people left in chambers, earlier tonight, we had a Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. We advanced eight items to our consent agenda on May 20th. This includes contracts for public works projects, inter-local agreements for our work on regional transportation and salmon issues, and a memorandum of understanding with Bellwether Housing regarding our purchase of a space for a city hall annex in Overlake. We also previewed two items for a study session on May 27th. One, public works items regarding the new asset performance management system, and a planning item regarding our next update on the transportation master plan, specifically the street plan and transit chapters. So back on May 27th for those. Thank you.
Thank you. Other committee reports to share? Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Thank you, Mayor. Committee report for Cascade Water Alliance, keeping you up to date on the CEO search process. Earlier this year, Ray Hoffman, Cascade's CEO, announced that he will be retiring. The search committee has been formed and developed a job description that's been posted on the Cascade website, as well as many utility job resource sites locally, regionally, and nationally. So updates on that will be shared as the search process continues. And also with a bit more change at Cascade Water, longtime Cascade leader John Stokes is stepping down. John Stokes was Bellevue Chamber Member and former mayor. I announced that he'll be retiring from Bellevue Council and the Cascade Board as of May 2. John Stokes spent 12 years serving and leading Cascade as Chair, Vice Chair, Board Member, and alternate Board Member, and he guided Cascade through many projects and accomplishments during his years at Cascade, including infrastructure improvements at the White River, Lake Taps Reservoir Project, the development of the Water Supply Development Fund, new wholesale contracts, and innovative water efficiency programs. And he will be greatly missed by his years, but his years of service will leave a legacy of clean, safe, and reliable water for years to come, while he enjoys becoming a grandfather.
Thank you so much for bringing up Councilmember Stokes from Bellevue. He did retire, and he was just a force in this region. I had the opportunity to work with him quite a bit. I know council president did as well on salmon, and I wish him all the best in his retirement. But he was, he's been, he was a wonderful person to work with, for sure. Any other committee reports? All right. Now, seeing none, there is no unfinished business, there is no new business, there is no executive session, and that concludes our business items for this meeting. If there is no objection to adjourning, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.